Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to our informal goals objective meeting. I want to mention that this meeting is being recorded. I want to thank SCTV. John is behind the camera. Thank you very much for coming tonight. This is an update by the town manager to tell us the board has set priorities and we need to figure out where we are with those priorities. I know that this that Sargis is moving forward. I know that the board had some questions and I appreciate everything our town manager has done, keeping us up to date on everything that this board has said is important by listening to the concerns of our residents. With that said, Mr. Town Manager, again, I want to thank the board members for coming this evening. We have another meeting at seven o'clock right after this one. And I want to thank our clerk, Meredith. Thank you very much for coordinating this, and Mr. Town Manager.
Sure. Good evening.
Good evening.
I think where I'd start off with, I passed something out to you guys that was an article that was in recent paper. It's an MMA study that's out, an article that you can actually link to. It's, you know, pretty interesting. But I think that one of the things that we I think should stay grounded with and understand is the, you know, our fiscal condition here in Sargis is pretty strong. I think we talked off, probably offline, but there have been communities around us that have their bond rating has been degraded, you know, lowered because of fiscal issues that have been known to be pretty strong around us. And there's also other communities, I think Winchester is one of them, that use a ton of free cash for operations, which is a no-no. They've been put on warning that if they don't have some sort of a override, that they will risk their bond rating. And so I think most of yous understand that if you start using monies that are not generated each year, I mean, you start using the one-time monies, obviously that comes to roost after a year or two, it's not sustainable. And, you know, I think we pride ourselves on trying to run budgets that way. And I think we're light years away from where they used to be. But I think that the importance for us to understand is that maybe because it'll affect us as well, but this article here has to do with the Massachusetts cities towns at crossroads confronted with historical historic fiscal pressures. You know, so basically it's talking about that local officials across Massachusetts, just like us, are sounding the alarm on a combination of increasing costs and diminishing state aid that has prompted them to face what they decide describe as historic fiscal pressures. You know, mayors and other local leaders say they have been stretched beyond a point where they feel like they are that they feel like they're failing their residents as they are facing numerous obstacles providing essential services. And the article goes on and on, but I think it's really important to read so that we get a context and we don't get caught up in, you know, different things. We, I think, do a good job of trying to identify what the needs are. We've set priorities. And I think it's important that we stay the course with certain things that we're doing. You know, and I try to use this example, and this is just a sort of preface, but if we do five sidewalks, you know, on Central Street, and, you know, we got to be careful that we're not, you know, 10 people go on and say, well, what about the other five sidewalks on this street? We're making progress. We'll get to those five sidewalks. The next year, we'll get to the other sidewalks that are on Hamilton Street the year after. We have a lot of projects that are going on that there's a certain amount of bandwidth that we have that are going on that are, you know, I think incredible for the town. It's continuous to move us forward, but would not be able to do any of it without having fiscal security, which we all live here, makes a list for our whole lives, and understand that that's not the way we grew up in the town. And everything we heard was that the town is, you know, you know, we're fiscally in trouble. We're, you know, before I got here, we were looking at receivership for the town for the state to take over. And, you know, we had people saying, oh, that's a great idea, you know, not a good idea, not at all. You know, we'd be in the category of Chelsea's and Lawrence, I think, was involved in that or one of them. But anyways, I think that's what I kind of wanted to preface. I think that it's important that we're able to continue to maintain our bond rating and have, you know, I wouldn't say spend within our means. So if you take in a certain amount of revenue and new growth, that's what you can spend. You can't spend money that's, you know, that you need for reserve. And people say, oh, 10, $20 million. It's not a lot of money with 140, $150 million budget, you know. I took over those $200,000 in the bank, 223 to be exact, for the whole town, for any emergencies or anything. We went through a pandemic, haven't had layoffs. We haven't had layoffs. Obviously, we'd like to do more. I think we take that in, we try to put things together for the residents by identifying what the needs are. But I think that's important to note to sort of set the tone. Anybody have any questions about that? And you probably, I mean, everybody's talking about, you see how many communities now doing overrides, all of them. Some of them are failing. When they fail, they're going to have major, major cuts going into it, you know, in the years, you know, next year. Other ones have been successful at doing that, you know, if, you know, so I think we're not in that position. You know, we would be looking for if we did anything as a debt excluder or, you know, operational overrides for things that the community wants to embrace, not because of an emergency, because we're going to lay everybody off, and we can't continue operations or deliver services anymore. That's a big, big difference. So I think people have to understand that because we have projects that are going to require those things. But that's at the consent of the residents, if they buy into it and they feel that the need and they feel positive about the projects, just like we did with the school. But again, as Jeff noted a lot, and I think Anthony does too, is all the capital improvements that we've done over the years, other than the schools, has been done since I've been here, within our operating budget. So we're paying debt service within our operating budget, which the projects that we do and have done and have in the pipeline, every other community around us does that with a debt exclusion. And if they don't pass, like, you know, then it doesn't happen. So I think that's, you know, just to remind everybody and kind of bring everything full circle.
Remember, we had to go up to State House to use a state bond. Oh, yeah.
That's how bad we were.
Yeah. And we were lucky to do that. And it wasn't even that great of a bond rating, but it was better than what we had. And people, you know, and people just don't understand that part of it. We, when I first threw it, we couldn't get people to lend the town money. So you go for a borrowing, you'd have one person, and it would be crazy rates, or you wouldn't be able to borrow. And the money was, you know, obviously problematic, the amount, cost of borrowing. So anyways, with that said, I have a whole bunch of stuff, and I'll try to start with some of the stuff with public safety, I think, public safety communications improvements. So as you know, this is, I think, a major undertaking for the town, something that's completely needed. We've gone through revamped plans over the last year or two in trying to get the right amount of money to do what things that are needed within this communication system. And just to kind of give an update, and I'll kind of give you more details, but just to give the bigger picture, it's about a four and a half million dollar project, pretty significant. And again, we've done that with grant money, we do that with appropriations, and we're able to do that without having a debt exclusion. But everything is, you know, 40, 50, 60 years old, you know, even the public safety.
Project completed, so?
No, no, they're in the process. So we're in phase one. So what I tell you, so everybody can pay for it, is one of the things we've gone out to bid, and we got bids, because of the laws that do with the bidding, we have different statutes and different packages that have to be bidded differently, because some stuff is construction, some stuff is, you know, is 30B, other stuff is like 149M. It's different statutes that these things come under. You're buying equipment, communications, it's a lot. Or if you go in vertical, horizontal with your projects. So this has like three different statutes. So we got to break the packages up. We got to get some information from some consultants we used so that we're in compliance with the Office of the Inspector General in the procurement laws. But in any event, where we're at now, we've already ordered equipment. We've done everything. The public safety, all have been involved in picking equipment, furniture, reviewing everything with our consultants and have signed off and all that. So the big, and I'll give you a little more detail, but the big picture of what's happening now is that we're going to be temporarily moving the 911 dispatch area. That's going to be going up into the training room. So that'll be out of service. That public, public training room or public community room that's actually, because it's open to the community, will become our dispatch area temporarily while it's a swing space while we do construction. So we're going to be reconstructing. Any of you been in there, I know somebody who's been in there, that the CEO's office or the commanding officer's office in the back, we're changing all that around and trying to use some of the space in the back. Have redesigned the whole area so it'll be more efficient. And all that'll be redone as well with walls and plumbing and electric and putting all new 911 systems in there, because now they're, I mean, we opened the building, I think that 99 is the equipment is probably, we opened in 2001. So, you know, it's past its useful life, but there's, you know, there's a list of stuff I'll kind of give you, boy, you're over with. But everything's being changed there. On top of that, we're also doing all the towers, fiber optics, and we're actually citing a new tower and going to install a new tower that's going to give us so that we have redundancy with all the radios and the communications between all public safety. And this hopefully will be something that'll be good for the next, you know, 30-plus years at least. But kind of give you overview with that. Does anybody have any questions about that? So there'll be a transition. There might be bumps in the road. But all this stuff's been ordered. They're, you know, running in this phase two and three that they're going to be, that's out to bid now for the other phases to this. But basically, first phase, the communication improvements, and this is for the public's perspective, I guess, and to help them understand, was publicly and competitively bid. Multiple bids were received. Project was awarded to low, low responsive and responsible bidder. Since the award, the selected contractor has reviewed all existing equipment, locations, public safety building, Mariah Lane building. I don't know if anybody knows, we have, one of the towers is up there. And the building and the tower, so the whole building has to be, I think it's collapsing up there. The satellite communication stations throughout the town, that's one of the other things we're doing as part of this, is where auditing and one of all the towers that we have audited, because there's equipment that's on there that probably doesn't belong on there, that people have put on there. There's also equipment that's outdated that may not, you know, should have been taken away, and it's not there. And we want to make space for it. So if we want to lease or do anything more with them, we can do it. It's hard to do without an audit. You need people that understand that enough to be able to figure out what's on each tower and, you know, whether it's Verizon or, you know, Boston Police or State Police that are on some of our towers, which they are. We don't really have an inventory of that. And I think that's, you know, decades of, you know, people just saying, oh, you mind if I put something up there on Verizon? Then they leave the tower and they leave all their stuff up there. And part of the lease was they're supposed to remove it. So we want to do an audit with the leases and that's part of this project. And then putting people on notice about what they have to remove, or we remove it at their cost and whatnot.
Scott, is that our tower on Mariah Lane or rent space?
Yeah. No, we own that. And we're looking up at citing another location to, you know, strategically so that we can stop the dead spots and also to have this redundancy with microwave. Like, there's all these different things. It's like belts and suspenders. So if something goes down, it's almost like having the mesh system in your house for internet. Although we don't have anything, we have, we don't have ISO for that. But it's sort of if something, one thing goes down, it doesn't stop like a problem where it can communicate with others.
How many towers do we have?
I think we have quite a few. I think there's one, I think there's one at Resco, Wilbraide. There's one, I think we're looking at on the location. But there's three or four locations that have towers in some of the higher spots. Mariah Carey is the most sort of costly at this point because we have them on private businesses. And one of the things they're asking is to try to maybe, you know, not do on our private businesses and try to look at whatever. But the Mariah Carey, that Mariah, Mariah Lane, Mariah Lane has to be, the whole building is like, you know, almost like it's collapsing, the towers collapse. So we're, you know, we're buying the tower and all that stuff. But the, but again, so the facility, to facilitate the modifications to the public safety dispatch and radio communications that we talk, the dispatch function will be relocated temporarily to the second floor community training room. After completion of both phases of the project, the room will be retrofitted with new furniture and audiovisual and continued operations as a community training. So once we take everything out of the temporary, we're going to redo that whole room so that it'll be better enhanced for them for training. We made that part of the project because we're going to be obviously wrecking, you know, breaking a few eggs by putting a dispatch area up there. And it'll be a change because it's going to be a little bit hectic while we go through this process. Contractor has submitted all equipment specifications that have been reviewed and approved by our communications consulting team. This is Sargis Public Safety Representatives. Equipment has been ordered, and the contractor will begin installing the equipment as soon as it arrives. First deliveries are expected in mid-November. If like anything, if they say mid-November, I'd say mid-December, maybe. But if they, as soon as we get them, they'll start doing work on that aspect of it, this phase. Just to understand, like, because I think it's a lot to understand, it's four and a half million dollars worth of work, but it's small sample of the equipment. It's actually a nine-page list of the stuff that we're purchasing throughout the whole project.
You don't have to read it.
No, just, no, like dispatch consoles, radio control stations. We're putting a new Z-tron in, which is what records everything. And that's like something for the fire department and everybody to, you know, when they hit the Z-tron, that alarms everybody, the ambulances and all that stuff. So that's outdated and needs to be replaced. Police and fire transmit and receive receiver control station equipment, repeaters, these other things that, you know, I guess, read satellite locations, radio site, power systems, antennas, accessories, rack for equipment, fiber electronics. So all that good stuff. Phase two and three, so just you understand, phase two, design and bid package, it has been completed and is currently out to bid under a separate bid process due to alterations needed to the dispatch area, radio room and building, related improvements needed at Mariah Lane, roof, walls, HVAC. This phase of work will also include citing 150-foot area tower, which is phase three, that will increase and provide radio coverage throughout the town and working to eliminate as many dead spots in radio coverage as possible. Bids for phase two are due November 19th. Work will be sequenced and scheduled based on the bid's availability equipment and lead times. So that's, that's, you know, I mean, people forget all that stuff, that we're doing this stuff. And sometimes they say, oh, what is the town doing? And we can say it at a meeting, but people don't understand that this is pretty significant. And I think it's, you know, one of the more important things for our public safety, for not only for our offices and firefighters and everybody else, but for the residents as well. Because, you know, when it rains, we had copper, we've already upgraded, done some phases of this early on that wouldn't be repetitive, that would help us in the situation that we've been in for the last couple of years. And I know all of you have talked to me at different times, saying, what are we doing? And we kept trying to analyze it. You get somebody else in, and all of a sudden, you say, this is a bigger project than the two other people that we had look at beforehand. So anyways, I don't know if you guys have any questions on that, but pretty significant.
How much of that initiative is being paid for by a grant?
I think we have a, we got a million-dollar federal.
Thank you.
So, and just to, you know, not to jump topics, but I can cover a little bit of it now. But one of the things we're looking at, we talked about Clifton Dale, is some of that, we have $2.3 million in a federal grant with that. It's been tied up. We're still trying to, because of some of the stuff that's going on, the federal government with the, trying to pull funding. I think we're optimistic that we'll get it. And we had to revamp it a little bit because originally it was far, it was far acquisition. And then the time that it actually came through, we already acquired, but it was for both. So we're, we've working with, you know, the Senator's offices, the federal, we're waiting, and we're supposed to hear anything soon as far as getting the actual money released. So we thought we had it already released, and we didn't. So that's kind of been what the delay has been, trying to move forward down there, because that's a significant portion of the money, $2.3 million to be able, you know, raise the buildings and then put a parking lot in. So hopefully, we've been pushing, and they, we're told that it should get resolved. But there's been different issues with, because that money isn't technically under what was being targeted. But yet, it had to be a new description and make it more specific to the actual demo and putting a parking lot in, you know, to help businesses and help grow the economy there. So that's kind of where that's been done. I know we kind of talked about before, but we were still trying to work through it.
I know that we were purchasing the properties to create more parking to help revitalize Clifton Dale. But are both lots going to be used for parking?
Yeah, I think that would be the plan. And I think part of it, I mean, I hope people probably don't love it, but part of this too is a good opportunity, because if somebody come up with some kind of better idea, we're all here to listen. You as the board, myself as the manager. Someone said, hey, we should do this with this, or maybe we should do that, then maybe it come up. But I, no one's come up with anything I think that would be better. And I think we all know enough about it that I think that the parking's never going to hurt, right? And it'll never hurt. If we later on, you know, there's some developer or something else that comes about, could do something to revitalize the area, I think it's a different thing. But the parking, I think everybody agreed that that's the key to any kind of success of something, because if you're a restaurant or anything else, it's.
Hundred percent.
You know, there's a whole bunch of myriad of other issues, where the roads narrow, the sidewalks are probably too wide and all that. But, you know, everybody comes up with, oh, we'll make it one way. And then the people on Jackson Street will love everyone after that.
Right, yeah.
Yeah. But I think, I think the big thing is that, at least, I think we haven't heard any, too much controversy, right, until we start the project, and then everybody will come out of the woodwork. But, but I think that the parking lot thing, so I'll keep you posted on that, but that's kind of been the fight. I've had somebody reworking what we had submitted, and they said that it just needs some kind of an approval, which it's been on the thing. Originally, it was something to do with the, making sure the funding wasn't part of the targeted funding that was cut. So they just got off track. But so the other thing is, one of the big, major things I think that is important to all is the third fire station. So I think we talked before, and, you know, just to kind of update where we are, we are, have identified an area, location area. And I think it's a matter of, like we talked before, figuring out timing. Why? It's because we're going to need a debt exclusion and override, and people are going to have to buy into this. And I think what I'm happy about, because sometimes people don't like that things take a long time, but what I'm happy about is I think people are starting to talk about a different branding. And I think that's a good thing for us as a community, because I think this will benefit the entire community. And I think before, we were just talking about, there's going to be a fight. And so I do see even yourselves, when you're talking about things, you're talking about this is a whole, public safety and it's police and EMS. And I think that helps as we get momentum to try to get to this.
The thing you need to make sure you clarify, but now people are saying that it's going to add to the price tag, because it's going to morph from a third fire station, it's going to morph to a public safety. And, you know, what I say is, my understanding is, primary is still going to be the fire station, for the fire station equipment. But there'll be a spot for a police officer who right now has to drive back to headquarters to write up a report and go off their beat versus being in their, in their region, going to an office that's in there, a location, they can write their reports, do what they got to do and get back.
So P, this is what people have to understand, right? So this, this thing is about public safety, and it's about all the public safety communicating throughout the whole town. It's like mutual aid, but it's within our own town. So obviously, we want fire equipment on that side. But I think the bigger thing is we want ambulance, we want first responder services on that side of town. And it's not just for that side of town. So people have to understand, 90%, 90% of the calls are first responder medical type calls. The fire is insurance, right? You want to make sure that if you have a fire or, and or, so it's not one or the other, but the fire assist and first responder thing. So if you're choking, they're going to be there. But now, having an ambulance, which we shouldn't ever got away from that, you know, before my time. But when I was here as a police officer, the ambulance used to be here with the fire trucks in the old fire station. So they'd go all together on all the calls. So now you have ambulance that can transport, and you have medical first responders on fire and ambulance, and the police all going to a scene. And so people, that's what people have to understand, is that you're going to have a bay for the ambulance, which we want on that side of town, so it's stationed. And you're going to have fire apparatus that's going to be able to handle that stuff. But you're also going to have a small office in there, so that somebody that's a police officer that's working that sector on the north side, if they have a call, right, if they have to go in and do a report, or they need them at the station to do something that's, they only can do with this, that they can do here, and they come in, and then there's a call, let's say, Water Street, you're starting from here to go back up there. So this way, he get to keep them up there, and they can go in, use the bathroom, do whatever up there. And I think it makes a lot of sense. And we've talked to, you know, people that have built these facilities. We've talked to other communities that have taken this concept. And I think it's a much better idea than, oh, this is a fire station. This is for the firefighters. And then people start saying, oh, it's overtime. This is about public safety. So the other part that you brought up, and I think everybody understands, but I think this is the brand, that people have to understand this. This is a public safety building, and it's about, you know, first responder, public emergency, public safety. So that if everybody on this side here, like even for the people on this side of town, they say, well, I don't need it because I'm on this side of town, have to understand. Even if you're on this side of town, if there's a call, and there's a medical call and a fire on two different working calls, or three different work calls on that side of town, everybody that's stationed in this town, is going to that side of town, right? So that you're on Ballard Street or Dudley Street or something on the east side, you're going to be calling for help. There's nobody coming from here. So part of that is having one more apparatus, more equipment, and it's going to take more manpower. But it adds more public safety in that way there. You're not having a lot, you're going to still have to some extent, but it's sort of a rotating thing. So if they went on a call, then, and there's another call, then they're going to bring this out. They're not going to be the first one out, so that everybody's on one side of town. So I think the more that people understand that, the better off we are. And I think.
And also, the town as a whole is growing.
Right.
We're growing, not just in pure, you know, population of apartments, but just in headcount, the number of people living in homes.
In a house.
The number of people living in homes. So when you look at our population and compare that to the number of apparatus that we've had, our apparatus is pretty consistent to what they've been over the last 15 years, but our population isn't. So, and they're building developments, and they're building in areas that only increases the volume of calls that are out there to take our folks off of reserve, if you will.
And I would combat the other stuff, you know, and I hear all different things, right? It's like trying to say that we don't care about the schools, right? In other words, we've done nothing but try to build brand-new schools, fund as much as we can, and assist in any way to make the school system successful. To say, well, we don't care about public safety because we're not like rushing to the thing to get this done, because we're trying to do it right. We care about public safety. This board and myself have hired and budgeted and funded more police and fire than we've ever had in the history of Sargis, right? Like, when I was on, we had like 50 guys, we have 70 now. You know what I mean? The fire department, the same thing. They, we've professionalized the fire department, where they have a, you know, a deputy chief that they never had before. We have brought on, you know, and met the federal standards for adequacy.
Number of firefighters.
Four firefighters on an apparatus, which is the safety standards, when we used to have three. And we've also brought a captain into a car, so that, understand this part of it, right? We funded this, we supported this, because this is about our residents, and you guys have all been part of this, is making sure that when we have a working fire and a working incident, that we have a captain that's in a car that's running the scene. He's not, like, before, how we did it is that captain would be, or lieutenant is on the apparatus in the fire, in the building, trying to run the operations and run the scene. And so it's brought so much, I think, safety, and we've really professionalized. And I think moving, and, you know, Chief Newberry's been great at pushing this and supporting these initiatives, that I think it's great. But I, I think the idea is that we're public safety, all of us want to get a public safety building, and it's strategic how we do that, I think. I think a lot of it has to do with helping brand, you know, what we're doing. And I do see parts, and you guys must see it, right? People are starting to say it's a public safety building. And you're going to have critics say, oh, this like, because they're all, they've done, they've built five fire stations in their life and career. You know, I mean, this is a learning experience for all of us, as we go through a process to learn this. With that said, I think part of it is, we need the support for a debt exclusion and an override. And I think we've talked about this offline and online, that I think we're going to be looking at for sure next year. The, you know, the thing now is going to be to secure down a property that'll have to go to town meeting. But I think we want to make sure that we don't get distracted with people that say, oh, we shouldn't have a small little office in there for the fire. Oh, we shouldn't have the ambulance in there. We should only have one fire truck. Nobody's an expert in this. This is about putting a package. I went through this with the schools, where people say, well, let's not have this. Let's not have, you know, middle, high school together. You know, it was the smartest thing we ever did. You know what I mean? By, oh, let's not have an athletic field, like, let's not do this. I think part of this is, you know, this is a process. And I think that the more we talk about this, and get people to understand that it's not about one side of town, this is about everybody. I think we'll have a better chance of succeeding. And we need people that are leaders like yourself to join in, like we did with the schools, to be able to get people to support it, because we can't do the project without that. I don't know, whatever anybody tells you, it's, you know, 35, you know, I don't want to get quota for numbers, but you're talking $35 million probably to apparatus, the building and all that, you know, maybe less, but, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, you know, bet on it, you know what I mean? And I think part of that is to do that. So we're ready to go. We have people secured and given the contract to do the design and move. That part will move pretty quick. I think the part now is figuring out the timing and bringing this into the next year, far, you know, narrowing down the location of the property where we would do it. It sounds like there'll be some, you know, arguments over that. We're working through some of that process now. And then if it's not, then we'll be looking at a secondary area, which Um, we're working through some of that process now, um, and then if it's not, then we'll be looking at a secondary area, which is not. As optimal as this area, but it and we talked about this before, you know, some. Yeah, it was zones and then we would look at other properties in that area, um, but I think, you know, the most optimal from based on the. Studies that we've done and and the consultants that we've hired is that, you know, this is the more optical area, because you're able to come north. And I think that makes, you know, common sense anyway for police, fire and.
We have the vocational school on top of that. Which is already started, the the impact.
This will be the bigger, next year will be the bigger thing, I mean, I think. So anyways, that that's what the fighting, but I I agree with you, I think we have to strategically think about that and I, you know. I think you guys won't do that, but I don't wanna be left on an island either, saying, okay, we're gonna raise all the tech, we're gonna do all this. So we have to strategically figure out, do we put a cou- a couple of things on at one time, do we focus on one thing and eat eat something else? Uh, but the Volk thing, I think, brings another issue up, right? Because we do have, it's hard to like to zero down what the exact dollars are. But they are increasing, the thing that bothers me is I think we talked about it, we had an average of two hundred and ninety six students in there. Uh, uh, over six years and now we're. We're in a on a pace to have only eighty students, like, you know what I mean? So. The price has gone down for what we're paying, but we're not, and you know what I mean, I don't, a lot of people say, oh, that's great, I'm glad nobody can go there and it costs less. That's not the right answer, the answer is this is a public school that we're funding and. We should have our kids have an option as a choice to go there, it's like you can go to a charter school. Like it's up to you, you know what I mean? It's not private. It's gonna be sixteen hundred students, so then the budget, I mean, Jeff always points this out, cause people forget it and you're bringing it up. Is that there's a construction cost, like paying for the construction, right, that we're hooked on to. But not a funding source. So that and everybody go, oh, we want like more money for the police, we want more money for the library, senior side of the school. That we're spending now, probably this year, I think we budgeted maybe seven or eight or nine, I think nine hundred might be coming in at seven, it might be. I I gotta see where we're at with it, um. But that, you know, that's per year, like say right now, and that's gonna go up over a million, no matter, you know, even on the eighty. But if they, we get up to what we were, we're looking closer to to sort of, you know, most to the two, you know, towards two million dollars a year. And we're absorbing that in our operating budget, right? So we.
And then the and then the increased cost per pupil. You know, on the assessment.
Right, so you gotta think on a package today or something, right? I got one too, you get one in the office.
I don't know.
Some kind of T-shirt, something you got it?
A T-shirt?
From the Volk. Yeah, well, they sent like a package. So anyways, but I, you know, cause you're celebrating is a big deal, but I think that you have to understand is that. You know, everybody goes, oh, the town will figure it out, town will figure out, you take a million, you know, million and a half there, you the trash thing goes up a couple million dollars. You know, this goes up, it squeezes the budget, I think I'm pretty good at being conservative as a lot of people criticize, but. You know, we're now absorbing things and, you know, and you gotta be worried about that, and so I think, like you said, we have to strategically decide, I think the next board will. Have to figure out thing, but the fire station thing is will be at the ballot next year, and I don't think we should be having it. When there's another election, it should be a separate thing to to.
The other thing that we need to be mindful of, and we actually just sent out a news blast to our clients, because. We have been on a historic run for our stock performance in the stock market, we have a pension plan.
Twenty years is off the charts.
Pension plan that all the assumptions are are right now based on our historical performance, as soon as we hit a dip in the market. Our funding mechanism for the pension plan could go up by millions of dollars. Right now, they can't believe all the actuaries are scratching their head saying, how is it possible we've gone through Democrat, now we're Republican, Democrat. We've done this in the in the stock market, hasn't had since two thousand eight and twelve, the real corresponding adjustments, eight was the worst, right? And it's gonna come, it's inevitable that it's gonna come and when it.
It's never been this long. And even the index funds are beating all the managers.
So when it comes, we have to be prepared, people don't see that. But your pension contribution is gonna change dramatically.
Which will draw off the operating.
Which will draw off the operating, you can't go out and, oh, we can't pay our pension contribution, we gotta go for an override or or debt, no.
No, you get mandated.
You have to pay it, you you can't go out of compliance, if you go out of compliance, there's penalties that are, would cripple the town, so we're trying to. We still have clients.
We'll be fully funded, right?
It's based on projected and they have to use what the stock market has done thus far, so because we're on this historic run.
Right, or if you start getting a three percent return instead of twenty, right, no, twenty five, thirty five, they just schedules going on.
So so right now, you have one bad year and it changes. The long term, what they refer to as the PBO, what we what we're projected to, oh, and then they say, oh, we're gonna change your amortization schedule, we told you you were fully funded in. Twenty twenty seven, guess what? Now it's twenty thirty five and you have to start putting in an extra three million dollars, five million.
Well, the other thing is with the rule of thumb, I don't know, years ago, it used to be what, seven years, you double your money, seven percent, like. That's like, you know what I mean, you double your money in two years. In some cases or three years, if you invested in in even indexed, index funds.
And there's also rules as to what the pension can be, can and can't be.
You can invest that aggressive, but I think so, I think that's a good point, and I think this thing, again, look at the article, we've weathered the storm. With the the pandemic, right? We actually benefited from, cause we use the opera money, we're using, we'll get to that, but we. Water meter replacement, six million dollars, that's not impacting the ratepayers, but we also used all the pandemic money. And we in improved all the ventilation and the air quality on stuff that had a double pop, right? One is the stuff was forty years old or 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 original and we were able to use money that was far improving air quality. With that money rather than going to the taxpayers or taking it out of operating operating budget with debt service, so we really benefited during that time. We authorized, we did renovations in the town hall and changed, we got more space in the offices and 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 with distance and all that stuff. So but again, everybody, there's a lot of trouble, a a lot of the communities are in trouble, so I, that's why I kinda. You know, people that aren't in the real world, understand municipal or understand business or what's going on in the real world. Oh, they got this money, they got that money, it's peanuts, like, you go through this in two years, gone, like, in other words, and you can't spend money you don't have. And if if the town or people in the community believe that there's more money needed for something, right? Then we should look at having a community, like Winchester's doing an organizational thing with the public to try to. About doing it all right, to educate people and get people on board with it, if that's what they think, I mean, some of the departments, I think, schools, they haven't really had any cuts. But yet everybody's talking about they had some kind of cuts, like, I don't, there's not really a lot of cuts, so.
But we give them last year about three million, right?
Yeah, I think yeah, I think so, something like that, I don't remember offhand, but I I guess the point is, is that I think. There's a lot of sort of things that aren't as accurate, cause everything and that's sort of a motivator, I think, for. Politics more than anything, because it hasn't seen any significant reductions. Um, anywhere, and I think we're lucky that way, so, um, but I agree, the Volk thing is a big issue. Like I think people are, oh, what's the biggest issues? I think the vocational, you know, we're eating the budget, you know what I mean, we're surviving, but it's not like, oh, okay, you can do it for thirty years. It's not gonna, it's gonna get worse.
But next year, I'm guessing it's gonna go up significantly.
Yes, cause all the borrowing's been.
Right, I mean, right after the election, you're gonna be starting to put the budget together and. We're gonna go into this very quickly. And if we don't have an override, is how's that gonna impact?
So so one of the things that I'm I'm not, I'm I I'll try not to brag, right, but you guys were all part of this. The the doing redoing the trash contract, right? We're saving like five, you know, like the numbers like five and a half million dollars over five years, so that helps out, like that great move that happened. That's helping us fund this stuff for we got five and a half years, right? We got five years out of it. To be able to fund something else, so now there's, when our drawing, we actually saved a little bit, even though the the cost increased, even with the savings. But if we stayed with what we were, we we'd be another five and a half million dollars, you know, another million dollars a year, over a million dollars a year. Just to maintain, you know, another drawer of a million, billion something, millions, one, million, two, every year. So, but you can't, you know, there's not so many trick, you only so many tricks you can. You can get before you have to pay the piper, and I think that's, you know, we're talking about, we gotta figure out the Volk, do we do something else with it, how do we do it? Um, you know, the public safety, do we put both on there or one, I I think those are legitimate issues, and I think those are so significant. Of of the success and there's no right answer, right? And we won't know until we go to the public. And then they vote no or they vote yes, and we say, oh, this is genius, you, you know, the selectmen were so smart, they knew exactly what to do with this. Or if it fails, they're gonna say, that manager, he is terrible, I can't believe he did that. But I I think we'd be, you know, we're gonna be ready to go next year for sure, and I think the property thing will come soon enough. And people can argue over that for a little while and then uh, and then we can kinda get past that and like, uh, someone used to say, like, like we're building a playground. You know, like we can argue over the color of the slide or what type of slide, but like at least we're doing something, you know what I mean, where something's moving forward. Um, so anyways, I don't know if you guys have questions?
Yeah, correct, should be mad, Kim, uh, question regarding Essex Street, what is the shelf life on that?
So another another, I think we talked about it here before, I mean, we're talking about building a brand new station, right? But we have a station that's probably, I think nineteen sixty is something, you you may know, I don't know, I think it was built in sixty, right? So it's something we've done, stuff, we put new uh uh s- systems in there and heating and AC, you know, uh, split, you know, the uh, the ductless split. Um, ACs in there, we've done a bunch of maintenance and stuff, but that building, you know, is is sort of older. So that's another concern at some point, but I I, you know, like, we're gonna have to consider that, right? Where the people might argue, whoa, you're doing that, why don't you fix this? And put the money into that, but I think, I mean, I think the third public safety building would be a benefit from a community standpoint, right? Go to go back to this, right? The most important thing, yeah, you have a fire, the fires happen and I and you you want the firefighters here, but firefighters are first responders. They're there when you're choking, having a heart attack, just like an ambulance, right? You have a fire, those are more rare and less, you know, happen and you want firefighters rested and ready to go. Because that's what you need, but understand the big thing for that public safety building being on the other side of town is that somebody over there or even over here, if everybody. They're all over the place, you know, if they're all drawn to one side, is that if you're home and your spouse or your parents or whoever, or your grandparents. Having a heart attack, you wanna make sure you're getting serviced there as quickly as possible, cause that's the literally. If you're, they're able to get there under six minutes, there's a big chance that you could save somebody from a heart attack or stroke and reverse it with medication. And we we have paramedics in our ambulances, that's part of our contract, so. That's the real more important that people have to relate to, rather than, oh, it's just a firefighter and we're gonna put more fire trucks. It's not, it's about the public's first responder stuff and about common things where people have a headache, you fall off a ladder. You know, you can't breathe, all those things, I think, are are what police, fire and and AM- EMS respond to. So I think we gotta keep understanding, and I'm glad that I've heard some different things out there that. Everybody's buying, you know, understanding that that's what we're not, this isn't about a fire station and and Golden Hills, this is about. Putting a public safety building on the west side that will help benefit the entire community. But I think we're gonna be coming soon, so there'll be debate, they'll be coming, I think, uh, you know.
The only reason I raise it's cause maybe maybe there's money that we. If if we're gonna go for an override or debt exclusion, maybe there's extra money that we can get to fix that place up.
Yeah, yeah, you could, I mean, we could write it broader, so it's like for public safety things, and then if there's, we come under budget, then we can. Sort of do some of the work there too or or whatnot, but yeah, we've been pumping into it. And I think some of the stuff in there, we we've been maintaining through borrowing and sort of appropriations with pay as you go capital. So we've maintained and all that, but it's an older building, it looks like, uh, every time I drive by, it reminds me of the Brady.
Just gonna say the same thing, Mike Brady designed it.
And you had the den and the. You know, all that stuff, but yeah, yeah, so that it always reminds me of that, but um, there's, somebody showed me a picture recently of them building it. Yeah, somebody, yeah, like about six, you know, five months ago, like someone showed me a picture, they had people like up on it, you know, raising the 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 peak or whatever, so. Pretty interesting.
I don't wanna rush you, but time check, we're. So I I know you have other things you wanna cover.
So we talked about the water meter thing, I think huge thing, six million dollars, the we're using A- A- the American Rescue uh Act monies. Uh, that's going very well, I can get more details at another meeting, but, um, you know, we've we're we're, we are, believe it or not, for Saugus, all the issues. We have like some crazy percentage compliance, like it's in the ni- high nineties. Uh, which they said most communities don't, where they get the card and they call them, do an arc, and then they've gotten in, you know, change the meters over, so so far. It's been really good, it's changed a lot, and I think now they're waiting, we're trying to get the software, everything up to date, I don't know, I know you did it, did you ever get readings? Yeah, so I think it's something they're still doing with the software, but you, I think they can pull it, it's just that you can't get on your end. Uh, but you could call and they'll give you a readout for every day you.
They do in each neighborhood at a time, because someone told me they call, but they said they weren't gonna be in their their neighborhood.
Yeah, they're doing different sectors. Um, so what I'll jump to, cause I know we're we're thinking is the parks and playgrounds, so. Um, as you probably have watched or seen, um, where the Golden Hills, um, that's still progressing. Um, we we had to go to conservation, um, actually conservation, I think they were sick or something, so they didn't meet. Uh, last week, I think they're meeting this month, um, and we get the notice of conditions, so that we can move out, everything's ready to go out to bid. Um, as well as, um, uh, Stackball, so we're we're, everything's bid is put, stuff is put together. Um, and it's a matter of, um, within weeks, uh, we'll be ready to do that and we hope to start. It's the weather cooperates to get some of the, some of the work done before the winter. Uh, but it would be a spring sort of completion and and opening, I think, for the, probably the, you know, like writers' school is getting out at the. Perfect timing and we'll be able to get those online, but, um, I think people are gonna be, you know, we'll do a public sort of thing on this, we've. Um, got some input, uh, from different people, um, but I I think that people will be pretty pretty pleased with, uh, what we're doing. Um, I made the joke that I'll be moving to Melrose and I'm gonna run for mayor over there, because. Everybody from Melrose will be going to their Golden Hills playground.
Is there, is there one of the parks that is a little bit more advanced than the other? Are they both gonna come online approximately?
Both the same, they're gonna come online the same, it's it's a matter of like, we're trying to combine them and now like, I think we're just gonna. The the problem is that they're, um, the Golden Hills was under already sort of a condition. And so they had to go back and and get modified or or do a new NOI with it. Um, not that, I mean, anybody's been up there, I don't, you wouldn't even know, but there's like a river way in the back or something, so. We just wanted to do it right and make sure that we covered all our bases, uh, but that's been a big thing, cause you have to hire. Consultants to put together uh calculations, like we have to put some sort of a compensatory. Underneath the the basketball court. And we wanna do it right, right? We want cameras, lights, you know, some low dim lights, you know what I mean, so that people don't hang around. Uh, but you want cameras to monitor the parks, um, and make it safe and and state of the art, so, and and fit in with that environment up there, I think people. The design wise, it'll be really, uh, one way, and I think Stackball people are gonna really like, um, but we'll go over, we'll we'll have a thing, I think, maybe. Maybe even the next week or so, just to kinda, or two weeks, we'll do something or or right after the election, that kind of lays out where we're headed. Um, and I hate to say it, but as you guys all know, if we come out too early with everything, then we'll be saying like, well, the slide should be over here, why do we?
Why'd you do six pickleball puts? Why didn't you do eight? Why didn't you do four?
Why didn't you do one? They only want, how come we're doing it all? I don't wanna do it at all, so. Uh, but I think that project is off the charts, and I think the parking thing we talked about, it's gonna monitor itself, it's gonna regulate itself, because if there's no parking, people aren't gonna go there. They're gonna go somewhere else, but I think, you know, we're in that era where you got grandparents, everybody going there, um, I think to, um. You know, to to see their kids and then or drop kids off or whatever, but, um, I mean, I drive by it all the time, it's, I mean, it's crazy, like, you know what I mean, so, but. The winter, you know, the cold weather's gonna start to come and they'll probably slow down a little bit for the winter, although some people play in the winter.
They'll bring the snowball, the snow blowers down.
Even the tennis courts, the tennis courts have been very active as well, have been by there a bunch of times, and I'm surprised how many people. You know, it seems like people are getting out, maybe the pandemic, you know, was like kept people in, um, are not doing as much, but, um. So tho- those are, I think, the updates on those, um, the other thing I think the to note, and I know this is near and dear and everybody's sad, is that we've done a ton of. Um, I have a ton more stuff on here, but I I know we're short for time, I mean. One of the things that we've been doing is to pay as you go, um, for maintenance and and capital stuff, a lot of it. Um, and and as as well as appropriation that we did the town meeting a few years back, we did about three million dollars like three years ago. So we'll probably do something like that again, so then we have things that we can borrow for, and then we also have stuff in the operating budget to do some of the stuff, but we've done a ton of work at the senior center. Um, senior center, we've, we already put a new a new generator down there, um, as we have one at town hall now for emergency, so. Actually hoping that we get some kind of a power outage for the for the for the winter and we can test these things out and make sure they work, but they run them every Wednesday. So for ten minutes or twenty, whatever it is, I'm dying to see if they actually work, because what happens a lot of times, you hook up and pay for all this stuff and then the first storm. Where's the generator? Never kicked on, then you gotta find out, we paid, you know, X amount of, you know, a hundred thousand dollars, how come this isn't working? So I'm kinda hoping that we get something that'll it'll kick it on, and we haven't, I don't think, right? We haven't had one yet. I think we had a blinker or something, but it's never never kicked on, and it's, those are both strong enough to run. The entire buildings and obviously the senior center, we can use an emergency shelter or the the new middle high school as well. Uh, but we've got new generators, we completed existing paintings and repairs, uh, exterior, I mean. Uh, we replaced the rooftop unit just recently, uh, from the Green Communities grant. Um, as you know, we've we've gotten over a million dollars, um, in grant money and we're applying. We're putting together now an application for another two fifty, sometimes you get it, sometimes you don't, you know, now we're over the thing. Um, you know, where the max was a million. Well, um, so we're looking at doing another three of the the rooftop units down there for the seniors, um, progress. Um, let's see, replaced carpet in the administration area, I don't know if any of you guys have been down there in a while, we put new carpet in. Um, we were just recently, um, completed weatherization, door sealing, insulation above wall barrier. Uh, that was under the Green Communities as well, paid for through a grant, uh, installed, uh, uh, what they call BMS control. For rooftop units, that was. That was part of the Green Communities as well, that gives us an ability to go on a computer. So that our uh uh facilities engineer can go on and look to see if the fans are running, if the system's down and analyze things, which he does on a daily basis and checks all the buildings. So the more buildings we have on these BMS computer systems, the better for us. We we can control the temperature remotely and monitor everything through a computer system, so it's all, it's it's amazing. You see the design, you can see when a fan goes out, you know, filter needs to be replaced, it's it's amazing. We've got really into the twenty first century. Um other things we've done at town hall, obviously the generator. Uh we're we're gonna be in the process and the next little bit, we're gonna be doing um the slate roofs to make sure that um. They attach and that we reattach them and that they're safe. We're actually having some of these trees, a few, a couple of these trees on the side here. So you've heard it first that they're not doing so well and they're gonna, I think they're gonna be taking one or two of them down because they're just not doing well. And if you see the roots, that they're trip houses, I don't know, whatever types of trees, but some couple of them are. Are really, I think, they're dead, you know what I mean, and they've been struggling. Um what else do we have? Uh town hall, um. So we put new blinds in, I think you guys saw that, upgrade the Christmas, we upgraded the Christmas electrical panels uh last year. Um that was one of the big things that we did, I thought that was uh important because we sort of had, you know, jerry rigged over the years. It wasn't winterized or cold, so. Um we also uh in process now, we're installing two VFDs for the for the chiller. Uh chilled water pumps under the Green Communities grant, so we're doing that as well. Um and uh we've done stuff at the library, we did some roofing on the library, also a rooftop unit. Um we put in BMS design optic controllers over the last year. Uh and and also install install the pumps. Uh public safety building, we've, I don't know, you know, you guys have noticed probably the steps we did, we're doing um some of that. Where we did all the concrete and mason everywhere. Um we also have done um um. Including the rear stairs, the fight of no one to get up and down the rear stairs. So we're doing things that have fallen apart over there and we're looking at more things and one of the things that I'm, I I throws me is that we're proactively. Looking at different projects and we, I meet with the the team and we go over what's what we can do next in buildings. And that's completely different than anything that went on for thirty years.
Wait till it breaks then try.
Right, we couldn't, I I make this joke, but it's not a joke, I mean, we couldn't afford, I mean, you on the board. Like everything was a broke, were broke, we couldn't even fix a broken window. Like it was just, like I know, you couldn't even imagine, at the school, you'd get a call as a broken window and nobody would fix it.
When you have negative free cash, you know, we're in trouble.
So DPW, we got, uh believe it or not, we ordered, uh you know, you saw the tower truck. I I guess all except, but the tower truck with the fire thing is awesome. We also got um the DPW, we ordered two different uh patches. We ordered one that was a patch, um uh, I think it's been three years, two and a half years maybe, and then another patch after that. Uh of, you know, two trucks, of the five ton trucks that replaced those, you know, the yellow trucks or whatever, so we replaced those. And um, believe it or not, we've gotten three of the four, so we're getting the other one, it's in state, they're doing it now. But that's how long it's taking to get the vehicles, as you can imagine. It's unbelievable to supply, you know, I don't know what it is, they, it was the pandemic and now I just think people just do whatever they wanna do and they don't keep inventory and then they build them from scratch.
Their new pump is coming soon too.
Yes, new pump is coming, so there's a lot of good things. I know we're short for time, but maybe if people got any questions, we got about three minutes. If anybody wants to.
Three minutes.
I have plenty more, I mean, we could do.
When did town meetings go on, the DPW trucks? It was a while ago, right?
I think it was two years ago.
Yeah.
And we ordered them, but we're just getting, it was two different, it was two different orders, so it was two different appropriations. So we did two and then two, so.
Scott, could I just ask you about the communication onto the people? Like I know you do the texts and the emails and so is there a next step that you're gonna be?
Oh, yeah, it's a good, good thing. So we're in the process now of doing the website and Mike's been working on that. Um I've been approving different things and we're trying to get different input, but um we're we're going to a whole new platform. And so there's a sort of a schedule of work that's going on and they say it takes six months, my guess it will take more like eight months or nine months. Um but we're in that process and we.
And we're using consultants too for the website too.
So we have consultants, I put it together, but it's like you have, they wanna, you know, it's a pain in the, they wanna. What type of radio button do you want? You know, Gloucester has seashells, I mean, do you want? So it's like I said, everybody, just tell me what you think is, looks pretty good.
I wanna see Jim Indian head.
Yeah, there you go.
Like the lights.
So but that's moving forward and that will give us ability to just send one thing out, connect people a lot easier. Cause it'll be that platform that we have now doesn't allow, we have to do it on three different systems.
Okay.
So and and if anybody hasn't signed up, sign up, I don't know, I think some of you guys are on it, but. Sign up for the 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 text messages because you get it and then you can click and get the whole news release, like for different things. We have different things coming up with, you know, I think we're doing, you know, a lot of the sewer work, we have a national grid work and we're able to get a lot of that stuff out.
We've got two today, the hazardous.
Hazardous waste day, yeah.
This COVID shot, COVID shot.
Yeah, and we have leaf pickup coming, I mean, we've put it up on the website, I know people seem, you know. We can't pinpoint it to an exact thing when they're gonna come by your house. I'm sorry about that, it's not like Santa Claus on Christmas.
Yeah, there have been a couple of questions, we gotta go upstairs, but there have been a couple of questions just for consideration going forward. Try to have the streets we've been passing after the leaves fall.
Yeah, we could do that, yeah, we could pick one up.
Only because the leaves that are run along the streets, they don't fall yet and they sweep.
The problem is sometimes you get leaves into the summer and we get, we usually do it later and then people complain saying why you.
Yeah, I know.
So you can't win.
I know it's a hot.
The other thing just to keep in mind is we went to the, you know, the trash contract, so that's something that we're gonna be still looking at. Uh you know, we've been, I've been straight out, but is trying to put together how we wanna implement doing with the barrels and all that. Cause we have the appropriation and doing those, I think, will be phenomenal for keeping trash from blowing all over the place. And just a more uniform system that would make sense.
I cringed the last few days when they were saying fifty mile an hour, I'm like, still look favorite.
But I I have more, but we may, we may obviously we're short on time, but I appreciate it and we're just gonna.
Thank you. Here, would somebody like to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Our second by the chair, discussion, seeing non-morals in favor, adjourning, please indicate for saying aye.
Aye.
Close, motion to adjourn.